I see, yes, there's Steve.
Okay. Sorry about that, guys. All right, call the meeting to order. Tom, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Mr. Rambacher. Mr. Seberger.
Here.
Mr. Craig. And Ms. Alder. We've got three, and that's a quorum.
Okay, have we any other members of the public or others that have joined us?
There is a member of the public, a Mr. Jeff Wykoff.
Okay, thanks for, thanks for logging in, Jeff. We have some other business to take care of first, and because this is our first meeting of the year, can we go directly to the election of officers? Or election of, of, yes, election of chairman, vice chairman, and secretary?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to keep the same chairperson and same vice chairperson that we have presently.
I had.
I'll second.
I heard of, I heard a motion and a second, so let's have some discussion. The, the current chair had indicated two years ago that it would be his final year. Last year, we had little activity, so I kind of bore through that, and now you guys are moving and seconding that this continue, which.
Steve, here's my thought, if I may, since I ended up to be the next president. I was assuming we have a regular meeting when the, and regular attendance by the board and, and that we would go ahead and do the election of officers. My only thought was sources in terms of members here that we just postpone the election of officers until the next meeting.
Well, that's not what the motion is.
I understand, but that's my thinking. I can, I can withdraw my second. What do you think, Terry?
You're, what you've suggested, Ian, is fine with me.
And I'm amenable to that.
Okay, let's do that. That's my motion to postpone the Board of Election, sorry, the election of officers for the commission until the next regularly scheduled and noticed meeting.
Okay.
Second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, Tom, we're, we're, we're tabling or moving the election of officers to the next meeting.
Very good.
Okay, that brings to mind that the only matter of business, well, do we have any old business? Approval of the last, last meetings, meaning, meanings, minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Any, any other old business, or?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay, any other matters that we want to get on the agenda other than the scheduled amendment?
No others.
Okay, so let's move then to, or let's take up the amendment five, seven, six dash two, one, a zone change filed by the applicant agent one GS eighty-one hundred Company LLC. Being requesting a revision of the Plain Township zoning map to change the zoning classification for a parcel located at eighty-one hundred Cleveland Avenue, Canton, Ohio four, four, seven, two, oh, from its present zoning application classification of a B two, general business district to an I one light industrial district. Is the applicant present or ready to go forward?
I am. This is Grant Gilz.
Okay, Grant. Gonna administer an oath or affirmation by virtual meeting here. Do you swear affirm that the testimony information you're about to give is the whole truth as you shall answer under God?
Yes.
Okay, and you are the applicant in the, in the amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Just to review, members, we all, I have, and I want you to verify for me, have each of you received the packet with the application? The maps and the attachments that the applicant submitted with his application?
I have.
I believe so.
Okay.
And I've also received an RPC letter.
Me, I as well.
Okay, as have I. Mr. Gilz, are you aware that, that there has been a recommendation made by the Stark County planning, Regional Planning Commission, and their recommendation was to deny your application?
I, I did read their, their comments, yes.
Okay, just so you, I want you to have the benefit of hearing from what we heard from them also, so that we can address any, any matters that you take issue with in their, in their recommendation, but first of all, why don't you go ahead and generally tell us what, what it is that you're planning and why?
Sure. Thanks, thank you for the opportunity, and if anybody can't hear me, just stop me, let me know if I need to speak louder, or if there's some disruption with the technology, just let me know, and I can restart from where we left off. But again, my name is Grant Gilz. I represent one GS eighty-one hundred Company LLC, located forty-eight thirty-five Munson Street, Canton, Ohio four, four, seven, one, eight. We recently purchased the property at eighty-one hundred Cleveland Avenue, which is Fisher Foods, known as the Fisher Foods Building this past fall. We bought the property with the intention of redeveloping the property. Fisher Foods is on a short-term lease with us, and we expect that, that lease will extinguish by the end of this year. The property was built in the mid nineties and still has a mid nineties look. Our intention is to upgrade the facade of the building to bring it up to today's standards of look, feel, and just more of a characteristic of a better brand image for the building. Currently, as you indicated, the property is owned, a general commission, a commercial B two. It is our intention to get it zoned as a light industrial zoning. And the reason for that is a couple of reasons. One, the building was originally built as a single-source purpose, and it was a single, single-use purpose for a grocery store. And in the main entrance of this grocery store is facing Whitewood Road, but the main traffic is along Cleveland Avenue. It is our intention to design the building so that the portion of the building, which is the west end wall, to, to be more conducive for retail, which we, we envision about twenty-five thousand square feet on that side of the building to be designated for retail, and the remaining fifty thousand square feet to be a light industrial type user. Currently, there's a lot of vacant big-box properties available. There, there's the vacant Kmart just to the south of us in North Canton. There's already a vacant Fisher Foods on, on Lincoln Way that's been vacant now for over a year. There's a Kmart building on Hermont and sixty-two that's set, has been sitting vacant for years. Mark says recently relocated and has left an empty box at its former location on Thirtieth Street. And there's another vacant Kmart building on, on Tuscaraws as well. And there's a, a multitude of mid-box empty facilities out there that were probably once retailers, and they're no longer retailers. The, the retailing world has really changed in landscape over the last few years. CNBC, I just read today, reported that over forty national retailers filed for bankruptcy in twenty-twenty alone. So that we can see the continued decline of, of retail. And so we, we have, we have interest in the building for retailers, and we have interest in the building as a light industrial user. Right now, to, to make a, if we know the building's going to be empty in, say, by the end of this year, it, it's only smart, wise, and prudent for us as a group to, to figure out how we can best utilize this property. And I want us to be able to capture the best utilization of this building, which light industrial allows us to do. Currently, I'm talking to a tenant downtown Canton that has expressed interest in getting out of downtown Canton. They want to improve their image. They want to improve their ju- just their overall ability for, for their employees to have a more, I don't, I don't know how to, a, 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 a location that's more uptown than downtown. The owner expressed to me, he says that their employees have thirty to forty-five minutes to go out and grab lunch and come back. When you're downtown Canton, there's not too many of those locations that you can just race out and go and get and conveniently come back, and you don't have much of a variety either. Also, as the salesman from this company had, had commented, he says, when we bring outside buyers into our facility, they don't really, it's not the best view of, of the building when they have to navigate and traverse through some other dilapidated downtown buildings. They much rather have a, a corporate presence and more of a corporate atmosphere on Cleveland Avenue. And a prime example that, that occurred a year or two ago, two years ago, and I was intimately involved in the project, is Plain Township lost a great tenant, Combi Packaging Company. Combi was right off of Columbus Road, part of a three M company. We had already bought the building, we bought the old Diebold Building on the corner of Whipple and Dressler, across from Movies Ten, across from Table Six, used to be an old Sam's Club, if you can remember that. Diebold owned it. They had a subsidiary company called Midwest Computers. It floundered around, and then Diebold had it in their books for, for forever, and we finally bought it. We sat on that building for a year. And Combi came to us and said, there's nothing over at the location we have off of Columbus Road that gives us the appearance of a, a top-tier corporate company. So we are moving out of Plain Township, and they went to Jackson Township for the very, the very same reasons as this company downtown Canton wants to get out of downtown Canton. So if we can harness, ta- take a building that has great bones to it right now, and it's in a, in a good unique location within Plain Township, and it's sort of, you know, there's a lot of growth, I think, eventually going to head north on Cleveland Avenue, growth tends to go to the north for some reason. And, and there's all, there, there's other pockets of light industrial users in this vicinity that I'm referring to. So it, it's for that reason specifically that, that we would like to get a, a light industrial zoning classification. So it really opens up the broadband of, of what we can do with this property. Now, light industrial is much different than heavy industrial. The company that I'm dealing with is a wire coatings company, and, and they, they, they will have less truck traffic than a grocery store will have. Currently, the building has eight truck wells, six loading docks. If you can imagine a grocery store's weekly, daily business, they have bread trucks, they have pop trucks, they have beer trucks, they have meat trucks, they have produce trucks, they have their general grocery store supply trucks. And so when you take into account how much truck traffic is already going there currently, my, my, my typical light industrial user is Monday through Friday at seven AM, close at five PM. Maybe they work a half a day on Saturday, and they're closed on Sunday. Fisher Foods is open seven days a week, mainly till eight to ten, ten o'clock on most nights and eight o'clock on Sundays. It'd probably be less impactful on the light industrial side than what's currently there. Now, on the retail side of this building, I think it's going to be your normal retail hours. And, and so it, it's, it's a, it's a big-picture reason why we want to change this property from the commercial zoning to a light industrial zoning.
Okay, so if I could interrupt a second, what I'm hearing you say is you're envisioning this property being developed so that there is a simultaneous light industrial use in one portion of the building, and elsewhere in the building, there's going to be retail tenants. Is that correct?
It could be. It could be. Well, the light industrial, the nice thing about the light industrial zoning encompasses everything that's under B two. So we might have, we, we might have a retailer next to a light industrial user. You have that right down the street. If you, hey, Eric, are you still on?
Yes, sir.
Is, is there a chance you could pull up that map that, that I sent showing the, how, the close proximity of the other light industrial users?
Okay, and we may just have to give a quick description to our phone-in users, or, or we, it looks like we have everybody. Okay, there you go.
No, Mr. Wykoff is still online on his phone.
So, Mr. Wykoff, I, I can sort of give you the, it's an aerial photo that, that shows the Fisher Foods property. It shows where Canton Transport Company is. It also shows where US Hardware and Supply is located on, on Cleveland Avenue. It shows where United Architectural Metals is located. And also, I don't even know what to call the building. I'll, I'll just refer to it as the address of seventy-nine oh one. It houses the barrel room. It houses a steel distributor. It houses a, a communications company that, that fixes repairs, electronics of some sort. It has a landscaping company. It, it's a mixed-use type of, of building. But the bigger picture i- is, is the, the close proximity, the US Hardware and Supply Company, it, it's a, it's not a retailer. It's a light industrial user right on Breton Road, and it, it's less than five hundred feet away from my building. Granted, there, there is multifamily. There, there's a, an R two, an R three, an S one zoning all around my property within, inside that five hundred feet as well. And, and so a, as, as a real estate developer that has seen a lot of retail destruction, not only in my real estate portfolio, but just across the state, across the country, we know what's coming, and, and these buildings are getting smaller and smaller. And what we're, what we're trying to do is, is get our best foot forward and, and make the most best use out of this property. And, and quite frankly, you know, we, we just recently were still working on it, but we completed a, a large renovation of the old Oakwood Square Shopping Center on the corner of Easton and Middle Branch. Again, that was a dilapidated building that's set virtually empty for the most part. You had a couple hanger-on tenants that, that, I don't know how they were doing any business with how bad that parking lot was and how bad the roofs leaked and just, and, and we revitalized that. We brought that thing back to life now. It's about eighty-five percent occupied. When we bought the property, it was fifteen percent occupied.
It looks a lot better.
Thank you. Thank you. But again, it, it needed a, the first thing we did was give it a facelift. Fisher Foods Building needs a facelift. It's, it's, it's tired-looking, or I don't care who the user is, if it's a, another retailer, or another grocery store, or another light industrial user, you'd rather, we'd rather capture all these people, just have them stay in Plain Township and, and have the jobs staying in Plain Township instead of this particular light industrial user that how I got in contact with them. They were somewhere in the North Canton Industrial Park trying to find a site there. And I just happened to overhear a conversation, and I said, why don't you come over to my side, my, my site? And he loved it. So this is the reason why our application has been submitted. And, and we have a vested interest in the community, and we, we like the jobs to stay in the community, too.
Hey, are you, are you at a point where you want us to ask questions now, or do you want to, you have more you want to tell us first?
Well, just, I, I, and I know I said a lot, so, so, you know, just, just, and I can't recall if I said that the, the first floor of the building is seventy-five thousand square feet. There's a lower, there's a lower level of thirty thousand square feet, which was called the basement, so there's a total of a hundred and five thousand square feet. And just to add maybe some reassurances for anyone who might be concerned of a future light industrial user, since, since there is a lower level of this building, the building was only designed to handle certain weights and loads on its main floor. It can handle a small forklift. It can't handle a, a large forklift with large coil steel or large pipings and things like that. So as a landlord and owner, I wouldn't even be able to lease the, the building out to a potentially a, a user that would have those kind of heavy products. There's another smaller type user that we're talking to. He wants to put a canning company together. Right, right now, he likes the fact that there's already existing coolers and freezers in the building that he could use, set up his canning manufacturing plant, and, and almost have a seamless business. But it's considered manufacturing, non-offensive. You probably would know that they were there. They probably will send out a truck once or twice a week. So with that, I am open to any questions that you have.
Well, you're probably aware that when you're asking for a, a zone change, you're not locked into that building, sitting on that site indefinitely. When, once this is rezoned, if it is, you may in the future decide to do a complete demolition of that building and, and, and put, put something, put something else on there, and as long as it's within the classification, you would have the right to do that if we approved the change you're asking for.
I, I guess you could do that with any classification of zoning, though.
Right. I'm a little bit concerned about the, the mixing of the uses with retail and I one light industrial within the same building. Could you address for me what, how you envision insulating those activities from each other if there were hazards of, of manufacturing or any other types of processes that would be occurring on the I one side that might not be conducive to a, a, a grocery store or a a retail vendor that's in another part of the building?
I, I think you're asking a question, a hypothetical question, say there is a, a spill. Is that what you're referring to, maybe?
A spill, a fire, uh, whatever.
It, it, it's really no different than how we do a shopping center. Within their shopping center, for instance, at Oakwood Square, to use that as the example, we have firewalls within the hundred and fifteen thousand square foot shopping center that we have now. You have, you have to get approved by the, the fire department before any plan or any tenant can go in there and, and do its, its open for business or conduct business. So any future tenant would have to go before the Plain Township Fire Department, and they would have to approve those plans, approve any special fire hazards that, that may be out there that they see. It, it'd be like any other type of building that you, that you are splitting up.
Another question I have is with regard to the sideline setbacks in a B two and in an I, I one. The sideline and side yard requirements, when you're up against any residential use, I believe are at least fifty feet, and they have to be, and a buffer has to be in place. To the south of this location, there is multiple, or there, there are residential complexes of some sort. I think they're condo units. They look like they are. I don't see currently that there is being a, a buffer maintained there. And I'm wondering why, number one, and number two, what would, what would you do, if anything, to, to alleviate a concern that I might have about an industrial usage up against a residential usage?
Well, I, I think if you use the examples that are already right, right down the street from, from where we're at, you know, the, the US Hardware and Supply, it abuts right up to, I mean, literally, right up against the, that property. And, and they don't have anything, but I, I guess if the board were to say, Grant, could you put some buffering trees on, on the grassy area between your property and the property to the south? I think we are definitely obliged to that.
Tom, do you know whether the, whether there is some reason there's not a buffer there now?
I'm not sure. It was back in the nineties when it was built, and the resolution might not have required a buffer. Or the condos or apartments were built after the market was put in place. And the, the condos wouldn't have required a buffer.
Okay. Am I understanding your interpret, would your interpretation be the same as mine? If the zone change were granted, he, the applicant would have to put a buffer in there? Or, or get a, or get a variance?
Or get a variance, yes.
Okay. All right, I, I have some other questions, but I would want to open this up to the other board members to ask anything they want at this point.
Tom, this is Ian.
Yes.
I did not see, and maybe it's my own neglect, but I did not see an actual copy of the application signed by the applicant. We have that in place, correct?
Yes, we do.
I saw it.
Yeah, I, I, I thought you, you know, we, we've been through that before, that we had an issue with that once, and I just wanted to make sure since I hadn't seen it, that we're all okay there.
And I paid my application fee.
On, we just had an application once. It was, came up before the board, and nobody had signed it.
Oh.
So we had to postpone that review just because we can't accept an application without a, a signature by, from the applicant. Yeah, I, by the way, I appreciate the work that was done up there at Oakwood Square. I am concerned that Stark County Regional Planning Commission had a blunt denial. There are definitely residential areas adjoining this, this lot that I think need to be addressed, as Mr. Harrison was leading to. Terry?
I, I don't, I don't have any questions just yet.
Okay, do we want to let the, anyone else wishing to speak in favor ever speak at this point?
Yeah, for the record, Steve, before you came on, I had Mr. Wykoff put his name and address on the record as if he'd signed in at, at an open meeting.
Okay, Mr. Wykoff? Can you hear me?
I've asked him to unmute.
Yes.
And you're still in favor, correct?
Yeah, we're still in favor.
I've asked him to unmute, so.
Okay, if no one else is in favor.
Standby, standby. He may not be in favor, but I would actually, out of context, like to speak as a resident, not so much as an employee of Plain Township regarding this matter. But I would actually, out of context, like to speak as a resident, uh, not so much as an employee of Plain Township regarding this matter. If that's okay.
Sure.
My name is Eric Haynes.
There you go.
J I N E S. Uh, reside at three zero two seven nineteenth Street Northwest, four four seven oh eight. So what, normally I wouldn't speak during these meetings as a resident or employee, but I do uh, understand the implications of this particular uh, zoning change. With regard to the current uh, improvements that have made, been made at the Oakwood Square Plaza. I cannot commend Mr. Gilts enough for the courage that he had to take that project on. That was dilapidated prod, uh, prod property for over fifteen years. It was an absolute blight and eyesore for, for our township. He had the courage and made the investment to turn that into something that is a viable, very um, profitable venture, hopefully for himself, all of the vendors and uh, and the community around there. We have similar light industrial manufacturing just down the street. We, we're all aware, the companies that we uh, allowed to do this type of work in the township are regulated. Uh, they, they, they all run very clean and safe operations. And that would be what I would think that would be expectations of any zoning change, uh, you know, going forward. If, if you look at the area where I reside, you can see the city of Canton comes in and can aggressively annex an area. Can literally wipe out houses, wipe out residential sectors, nothing the township can do. So from my opinion, as far as a residence perspective, what we either keep up or allow somebody that's in a more dominant position to take over, just as it's happening over here. You can see it happening today. They aggressively move in and, and they do what they want. There's nothing that you or I as a resident or our Board of Trustees can do about it. So with that, I just say that um, i- if this was someone coming to you that we hadn't had any kind of history, um, you know, as far as improvement and commitment to investing in Plain Township. I may be a little more reluctant to stand up as a resident taxpayer. Uh, I have all the faith that this group uh, will deliver on the commitments uh, that they set forth. I, I've seen it. I've seen them uh, commit to uh, the pledge they've made. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I, i- and if I may, Mr. Harrison, just add one more um, in- inadulterate information, you know, when regional planning turned it down, um, I, I don't think all those members live in Plain Township. And I don't think they really took a hard look at the location that we're referencing. They, they might have given it a cursory review. Um, and maybe there was uh, some other uh, applicant uh, before me that, 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 that they had a precedent as to why they, they needed to turn it down. It's easy for them to turn it down than to make a, a decision to say, yes. You know what? This will probably be another empty building. And, and yes, Grant, you probably will be able, you know, if we kept it at B two, you probably will easily lease the portion of the building that's closest to Cleveland Avenue the fastest and the quickest. But I'll be honest with you, it's expensive to split up a building. It, it truly is. And, and so um, you, you not only have the reality of, sure, the first twenty-five thousand feet will be leased up, but who wants a empty fifty thousand square feet to the back of the building that, that, we all know what that, 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 that brings, you know, graffiti, vandalism. And I can't tell you how many empty buildings I might have that are missing parts and pieces from HVAC units because vandals have just pilfered, pilfered through them, cut holes in my roof, stole every bit of copper that I've had. If there's some aluminum downspout side, and they'll take that too. And, and so this is a neighborhood of a, a, a multi-purpose neighborhood. You, you have retail there, you have residential there, you have industry there, and it works. It really does work. And I'm not trying to change what is already there.
What uh, what percent of the building is currently vacant?
Right now Fisher Foods occupies the whole, whole building.
They're, they're, they're not doing business or actively using the entire building, are they?
Yes, yes. So, so there, there's a lower level that um, uh, I, I, I have a, a, a computer user that would like to use the thirty thousand square feet. So, so they are allowing us to go down there and start doing some work down there. But Fisher still occupies the full seventy-five thousand square feet on the main floor.
Doesn't look, it looks like they've downsized.
I'll tell you, their inventory looks pretty thin.
Yeah, it does. It's too bad.
It is.
What?
That was my, that was my one question now. This is Ian again, if I may. I would like you to address a specific conclusion of the uh, Regional Planning Commission. When they said, when considering a zone change request, the most intensive issue used is permitted in that district must be considered. The permitted use is allowed in the I one district, which include uses such as a cemetery or cold storage plant, light manufacturing or processing facilities and warehouse and wholesale outlets could have a detrimental effect on the adjacent properties. Address the, that, that conclusion uh, further.
I think if you look at what's, what I could put in, in just a B two zoning. If you look right across the street from my property right now, seeing these landscaping, if you really dig deep into that property and you dig, look just past that first front building, it looks like they're mining. Agriculture, uh, uh, y- you know, uh, s- something, it looks like it's some kind of mining operations going on back there. But I, I know what it is. It, it, they're screening topsoil and, and mulch and, and uh, dirt, you know. So there, there's a, a lot of things within B two that could go there that I think would be more offensive than some of the items in the light industrial. Again, um, the structural of the building, I wouldn't be able to put certain items um, that, that would be too, too, too heavy for the floor loads. And also, you know, we, we know how to combine tenants together. And, and I'm not going to put cemetery or mortuary next to my retailing tenants.
This is. Was to a creamery, not a cemetery.
Okay.
Sorry.
Like, like dairy.
You know, within, within B two zoning, there's some offensive type tenants that would be allowed to go there. It, it is. I'm a family-owned uh, company. We don't put those in our shopping centers. You don't see those in any of our shopping centers. Um, so, so you, you, you just have to, to um, you know, I don't, I don't wanna say it's an art to putting a deal together, but sometimes it's an art to put a deal together. They built the building as a single use purpose, and that was for a grocery store. And back in the day, that's how they built them, big grocery stores. They don't, they either go super, super big or really small now.
You know what? We, I, I could envision a use where a retailer who has an online presence and wants to warehouse their inventory would be a good tenant in that building. Because there'd be plenty of warehousing for that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you know what? That is what retailing is becoming. Uh, it, it's becoming, you, you have to be able to uh, sell your product. Maybe you have a small storefront, but you need someplace to build your widget to, to, to sell.
You know, in a B two, um, I understand that the uh, additional warehouse space uh, could be used for any activity, any activity reasonably related to the B two, which would be warehousing, maybe even what you're saying, some of the um, uh, gentle manufacturing of items that are sold in the retailing, and you wouldn't need a zone change for that.
Y- y- you know, um, a- again, we, we could, we could poke holes into those certain instances, uh, uh, probably all night, but, but the reality of it is, is um, you, you gotta be able to, to take a project and start marketing it appropriately. And to get the jobs, not only from leaving Plain Township, how do we get the jobs to come to Plain Township? And, and where, where is a fresh industrial building in Plain Township now? Uh, I gave you the prime example of Combi leaving, and, and they did exactly what you said. Combi made ice cream equipment, uh, that, that manufactures ice cream equipment. And all they do is take the parts and pieces and put them together and sell them. But they left. They went to Jackson Township. And, and, and so we gotta keep the jobs here in Plain Township and, and do it the right way.
I have a question, but this one's for Tom.
Yes.
Okay, assuming for the sake of argument that uh, uh, an industrial use is proposed for this property. Would that require the issuance of a zoning certificate based on some kind of demonstration that uh, the buffering or whatever that is necessary for an industrial use would be put in place before that began?
With the building already existing, uh, basically same question Mr. Harrison asked. With it already existing, I don't know that we could require on an existing building that the buffer be.
Not on an existing building, but on a, on a new industrial use. You know.
Basically, I think, I think if I could interrupt a minute, Terry, what you're asking, I think, is can we grandfather a non-conforming use by, by rezoning? And I don't know that we can.
Well, this is Ian. I don't know that there's area. I mean, it's hard to tell how, what the measurements are from the little picture I got and from what's been displayed here, and I maybe I should have looked at it a, a little more closely before the meeting, but I don't know that there is fifty feet available.
There's not, the grassy area isn't even fifty feet. Uh, the, the pavement is uh, less than fifty feet for the driveway from the, from the lot line, it appears to me. Maybe the applicant could verify that for us.
I, you're, you're totally correct in your, your statement. It's, it's a small um, grassy strip on the south property line that butts up to the apartments. And there's a, 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 a little bigger grassy uh, uh, portion that butts up to the west, uh, I'm sorry, the west, uh, east property line along the uh, senior citizen building.
And that's where the truck docks are, right?
You have, you have four truck docks on the south side, and you have four truck wells on the east side of the building as well.
Okay, that, that exhausts my questions.
Do we have anybody else in favor of the application? That wants to speak? Anybody opposed to the application wanna speak?
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
I, I would, I know Mr. Wykoff was on the, the phone, the, on before the meeting started. I don't know why he's got his mute button on. Have we exhausted every measure to give him an opportunity to speak, Eric?
We have not exhausted every measure. I have asked him to unmute. Um, if he's un, you know, he's a phone call, so I'm not even sure how he is muted. Um, standby. I mean, I have no control over his unmute, but I believe.
If somebody could send in a text.
To speak, cause I think he's been in this meeting for this duration to speak opposed.
Yeah, I'm assuming he's here to oppose, and I don't, anyone feel like he's been, his right to object and speak or support whatever he's gonna do because we're having technical issue.
Can, can I just ask the, uh, one, one other question to Tom, if I may?
I'm here.
Grant Gilz speaking. Tom, Tom, the uh, central transport, i- is, is that a light industrial user? The, the trucking station there?
Uh, that actually could be a heavy industrial, uh, I two. As well, as well as United Architectural Metals.
So, so United Architectural Metals could be considered an I two, central transport and I two. And then on seventy-nine oh one, I, I don't know what a steel distributor, um, that they, they have a lot of heavy equipment behind that building. Would that be considered a I two building?
I would say at least an I one.
At least an I one. So a- again, I, I'm just trying to stick to the I one. Upgrade the building, and I, I wouldn't want anything offensive going in there or dirty or, or noxious. Um, we would want it to be a, a, a company that, that can utilize the, the fifty thousand square feet to Mr. Harrison's point. It could be an internet-type base company where they need to do a little bit of light manufacturing.
If I, if I may interject, I wanna give this caller every opportunity uh, to speak to the board here. So what I'm recommending, I'm guessing that he can hear me now. I would like him to to, to actually cancel the call and then rejoin the meeting. Or unmute.
Says he's tried to unmute. Uh, I'm gonna send him a message that says, uh, hang up and call back.
Let's do that. Let's do that so that we exercise every opportunity to give him the opportunity to speak here tonight.
I agree.
Sure.
Thank you.
Get right now. All right. We'll see if that works.
Well, if at minimum, if you're in contact with him, we can go through you uh, to at least get his opinion. If we can't go direct. Okay, he has knocked out, which is great. I mean, he can call you and we can hear him. Uh, we obviously want to hear his, his objections.
Maybe if he calls in here first.
Uh, meanwhile, I have another question I'd like to direct to the applicant. This is Steve Harrison.
Yes.
You indicated in your application and in your testimony that you've recently acquired this property. Is that, is that the eight eight oh oh one entity that has recently acquired it?
The eighty-one hundred uh, GS, yes.
Yeah. Who was the owner before? And was that, were you affiliated with that owner?
No, the, we bought it from Fisher Foods.
Okay.
Hello?
Okay.
Hello?
Okay.
Hi. It's funny, I do Zoom calls almost all day. I've never had so much trouble. It's, it's what. Okay, so can I ask a few questions?
No, I, no. Um, this is uh, Steve Harrison, the chairman of the, of the uh, commission, and I'm gonna ask you to uh, take an oath or affirmation before you speak. Um, your, your, your testimony is to be directed to the, to the board. If appropriate, we would, uh, we would inquire comment from the applicant, but, but the quest, your questions or comments are be, to be directed to the board. Uh, would you stick, uh, your full name and address for the record, please?
Jeff Wykoff, three oh six five, Whitewood Street Northwest, North Canton, Ohio, four four seven two oh.
Hey, Mr. Wykoff, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true as you should answer under God?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead and say what you have to say uh, in favor of or against the applicant, or application.
I'm actually here on behalf of the Board of Whitewood Homeowners of North Point. Really, we are neither for or against. We are just kind of fact-finding a little bit. Um, I was given the packet, uh, been through all that. I, I already knew a lot about what you were gonna say. I, as everyone else. I, as everyone else and my community are not interest. Interested in that property becoming vacant. Um, I think we all feel that that would be the worst outcome. I think what he uh is proposing uh seems reasonable. I myself had a a business open in Park Center on Whipple. Uh, the the only thing that I saw there, I'm assuming that that is also uh considered light industrial. Uh, Park Center. And there, right next to my company, which was warehousing, they put in a. Countertop company. That cut granite and marble, which was unbelievably noisy. Um, they cut it and ground it all day long. Uh, they had their doors open. That kind of situation. Would not be appealing to the homeowners. Um, the situation where he's talking about about coating wire, I've actually looked into that on the internet. I don't see as that would be a problem. The trucks that come in and out of the grocery store don't bother us. It's really not that noisy. Um, what we would be opposed to is. An open facility that uh had a lot of noise emanating from it. Or, you know, a lot of employees that uh came into their cars and, you know, had their radios blaring loud, which is hard to control. But Fishers is very quiet uh for the most part. We do have a a pretty good barrier on the. East side between the store and the property line. I'd say it's probably oh fifty yards. Assuming they're not changing the footprint of the building uh dramatically. You know, given some noise control. I personally, on behalf of the board, don't see a problem.
Where is your, where is your neighborhood? Is that on the other side of Cleveland Avenue?
No, we are, uh, you've got the assisted nursing, the assisted living. Uh, Whitewood Assisted Living that is immediately east of Fishers. And then our condos is immediately to the north. So when you come down that street and you go, yeah, on the roundabout. You go to the right for the assisted living and left for the condominiums.
I do see that. Okay, that just gives me some context.
I have a question for Tom. This is Steve.
Yes.
Uh, Tom, in an uh. A light industrial I one usage, is there not some provision within our? Um, our zoning amendment that requires. There to be no um. Noxious or hazardous use that extends outside of the the building? There is, there is. I'd have to find it, but.
That's typical, that's typical for I one.
Yes.
You know, ordinances.
And so, and so, let me ask the applicant. Um, Mr. Gilt, are you uh aware and committing on behalf of the applicant that you understand? The restriction if if the uh. If the uh application were approved, that you'd be required, number one, to keep any noxious or. Um, nuisance activities within the confines of the building and that there may need to be. Uh, mitigations or buffers, whatever, between. The I one use and adjoining residential as well as B two uses.
A- absolutely, and um. Again, I I plan on having additional, you know, uh retail users and I I wouldn't want anything loud or obnoxious. You know, especially if there is maybe a a restaurant that that might go there to where. Uh, that business would be impacted. So so absolutely, that would be part of our uh uh governing process on our end as a landlord.
Can I make one other comment?
Go ahead.
Uh, we don't have a problem with a cemetery. They're quiet.
About a creamery. Okay. Yeah, so so I have another question for Tom. Tom, uh, one of the uh points made by the. Uh, Regional Planning Commission was that this. I one would be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And I I don't know if Mr. Gilt is aware that some of the industrial uses he's referring to. That have existed for years or are on nearby are part of are part of a his history that that. The township may actually be trying to get away from by the adoption of various comprehensive plans. Since those uses went into effect initially. And uh, do you know whether our township? Comprehensive plan. Um, would would have enough flexibility to be amenable to this kind of a zone change or or. Are um. Or is is the policy adamantly against this?
No, there's there's always a bit of flexibility in the plans. Did you hear me?
I did.
Okay. So I don't, I don't know that this is. I don't know that I agree it's totally opposed to the master plan. The the master plan is is more of a living document. And um. So. Changes are built in.
Yeah, one of the references in the commission's report was that. Uh, an I one designation in our township is apparently in their view designed exclusively for. The industrial and really doesn't lend itself to to combining with a. A B two or uh near a residential use and. Um, I'm wondering if that's your interpretation.
Well, i- if we look at just south of uh. About two blocks south of Fisher Foods at the corner of Orion and Cleveland. Yep, we've got United Architectural Metals. Um, that should be classified as an I two, but um the property was there prior to. The resolution and was grandfathered in. Uh, they just. From about thirty thousand square foot. Uh, to they added a building fifty thousand square foot. That um that business is right next to um condominiums that are much. Much like Mr. Wykoff's. And we have not received any complaints whatsoever. Uh, United Architectural Metals deals with um sheet metal. And large glass plates and they they put together for glass buildings. Um, right the to the north of Architectural Metals. Is a truck terminal. That has semi tractor trailers coming in and out all day long, uh using it as a transfer station. Uh, and that also was right next to those condos. And we haven't received any complaints at all. So I I um, i- if it's handled properly. Right. It 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 works.
And I think. I think you're referencing to handle properly might mean diligent enforcement if there's ever any instances of nuisances. Or whatever being created by the activity and I I'm thinking that I'm hearing you say you're willing to do that.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Alright, that's all I have.
I don't have anything else.
Uh, Nora.
I'm good.
Mr. Gilt, is there anything else you want to add that you feel you've uh not been able to uh. Address or that might have been raised by uh by the person who spoke uh uh from the uh general public?
No, no, I I I appreciate Mr. Wykoff's uh statements and comments and and uh. Um, the one, the only other comment I'd like to maybe just add is the. Uh, the 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 master plan that was written and I don't know how many years that has been written, but I think it's fairly recent. But I I think everyone can agree that. The Amazons of the world have changed commerce drastically, quickly. Way faster than probably all of us expected and and we're seeing those casualties up and down main streets all over America right now. And and so. The the this is just something that we're just trying to make sure we're 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 capturing and we're ahead of the curve. And you know, instead of being behind the curve and and I'm not gonna knock our uh a- adjacent. Townships, but but just to the south of us, we have a great big building sitting empty. It's gonna sit empty for a long time until they really come up and put their heads together. And that that could be a great corner. Um, and I think you all know what I'm which property I'm referring to, but. We know this property is is going to potentially be vacant and and so um. I I I'm trying to be uh ahead of the curve and progressive and and upfront with everybody and. That's why I'm here and I appreciate your attention uh and time that you give me this evening.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, uh, at this point in time. I'm going to. As we traditionally do, I'm going to move. Approval of the proposed zoning amendment. Uh, and state that. I'm putting, doing that to put it. On the floor. That does not necessarily bind me or the second to vote for it.
We always take motions in the affirmative. Discuss them and decide whether yes or no.
So hold a second for motion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a by Terry and a second by Ian to. Um, in favor of the granting the application. Okay, we'll now open it to discussion among the board members.
The motion, I guess I'll get started. Uh. Uh, there does not seem to be a ground swell. Uh, of opposition to this rezoning. I do think that the existence of us some similar. Uh, what I'll call light industrial or even maybe a little more than light industrial. Uh, in the blocks south of the Fisher Store. And mean that we're not. Considering a a pure. Instance of uh out of character. A spot zoning. I don't think anybody wants to see that property become vacant, which is certainly. A risk. I do appreciate. You know. The planning commission, but. We are not bound. By their comments, so I will say that I intend to vote for the application.
Yeah, this is another one of those. This, this is, this is Ian. It's another one of these situations where a strict reading of the. Recommendation from the Regional Planning Commission and maybe even the. The uh. Zoning revolution and the comprehensive plan. Would say. Not to do this, but again, I would agree with Terry since there's been no opposition to it. We've got experience with the applicant. And we may need to show some flexibility because of changing economic times. I would also. Probably have to vote in favor of this amendment as well.
Um, I'd like to indicate, thank you, fellow members, I'd like to indicate that I too am. Uh, was primarily concerned with the. Two factors of safety and aesthetics. I think the RPC recommendation. Was more focused on. Sticking with the long term plan. And and that's what they do. They plan. Uh, without um. Regard to the realities of the uh, the economics, the pandemic, the the retail. Uh, uh, community right now, the. And the safety and aesthetics factors, I want to address those. From what I'm hearing, we had no input from the fire department as to. Opposing uh in any way this uh application, although they were given the opportunity to address that if they. If they had such an objection. I'm hearing our zoning inspector tell us that if this uh operation becomes. Uh, in any way, uh, a nuisance or hazardous beyond the confines of the building. And uh. Uh, or to adjoining neighbor that that there would be cause to issue a. Uh, an order uh. To mitigate such. And I'm hearing an applicant who's saying he's uh compliant and 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 willing and has shown a history. Uh, of 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 willingness to do that in our township. As far as. As far as aesthetics, it sounds though. As though the bigger concern aesthetically would be an abandoned building. And uh, if if approved, the applicant may be in fact improving. Not only the front facade of the building, but also the um. The uh ability to maintain and keep it as a viable operation without falling into some sort of. Of uh abandoned and uh. Uh, rundown state. So in terms of safety and aesthetics. I'm not seeing a case that we would have the 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 large concern. Uh, that would justify a denial. So I'm, although I had my doubts or concerns before I this meeting, I was. Uh, welcomed to to hear the testimony by all parties. And I am inclined also to uh agree with the other my colleagues in granting the application. So at this time, Tom, do you want to call the roll?
Mr. Seberger.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Crawford.
Aye.
And Mr. Harrison.
Aye, yes.
Thank you.
I think that's the end of the business. If I may so be so bold, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, good luck with your endeavors to the applicant and to those who uh. Participate in tonight's meeting. We appreciate your uh civility and your. Uh, willingness to uh deal with us in a virtual way. Uh, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, everybody.
Although before you, before we hang up, uh, Tom, don't you need to uh. State when this will be taken up by the Board of Township Trustees?
Yes, this will be, uh, I don't have the date. This will be taken up by the trustees at their second meeting, which will be.
Weeks from last night.
Tuesday, it'd be the uh February ninth.
Okay.